The City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 Planning Department Budget.
On the question, there is no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero. Now we'll move on to Resolution Number 64.
Resolution Number 64, 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 Civil Service Budget.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 65.
Resolution Number 65 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing an animal control contract with Ulster County SPCA and recommending modifications to the 2016 Police Department Budget.
On the question?
President Noel.
All the room else?
I would just like to say that I am in favor of this merge of the SPCA and the Kingston Police Department. However, I understand that our contract does not yet sign between the two entities, and for that reason, I will either be in no vote or I would recommend a motion to send it back to committee until that contract has been signed. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes.
So, we have a motion to send back, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, to send back, all in favor?
Aye.
So do raise your hands to the ones that want to send it back. For the ones that don't want to send it back, raise our hands. Okay, so the motion to send back is to be sent to. So we're going to go on with the resolution as originally proposed. On the question, here is no one, we call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So, our resolution is adopted, eight. Now move on to Resolution Number 66.
Resolution Number 66 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 Parks and Recreation Budget.
On the question?
President Noel.
All the room else?
I would be supportive of this resolution, however, I have opened up questions that I did not receive any answers to, therefore, I won't have to be in no vote on this, even due to the fact that those questions have not been answered by my departments. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Here is no one else, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Resolution is adopted, eight. Now move on to Resolution Number 67.
Resolution Number 67 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 Department of Public Works Budget.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 68.
Resolution Number 68 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 General Budget.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 69.
Resolution Number 69 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Kingston Risk Management for the purpose of an insurance bid and approving associated budget modification.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 70.
Resolution Number 70 of 2016, An Ordnance Amending Inordinates in Relation to Traffic on the Public Streets of the City of Kingston, New York, Adding No Parking Zone on Broadway.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now move on to Resolution Number 71.
Resolution Number 71 of 2016, An Ordnance Amending Inordinates in Relation to Traffic on the Public Streets of the City of Kingston, New York, Adding Handicap Parking on Van Buren Street.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 72.
Resolution Number 72 of 2016, An Ordnance Amending Inordinates in Relation to Traffic on the Public Streets of the City of Kingston, New York, Adding Handicap Parking on Wilwood Avenue.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 73.
Resolution Number 73 of 2016, An Ordnance Amending Inordinates in Relation to Traffic on the Public Streets of the City of Kingston, New York, Adding Handicap Parking on Trumper Avenue.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now move on to Resolution Number 74.
Resolution Number 74 of 2016, An Ordnance Amending Inordinates in Relation to Traffic on the Public Streets of the City of Kingston, New York, Repealing Handicap Parking on Sterling Street.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 74.
Resolution Number 75 of 2016, An Ordnance Amending Inordinates in Relation to Traffic on the Public Streets of the City of Kingston, New York, Repealing Handicap Parking on Janet Street.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 75.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Sure.
There was, um, there's discussion on Resolution Number 75, because it was spoken last night that this resolution was to put that weekend parking would be permitted, so I just didn't know that needed to be added here. And I'm sorry.
That's a good point, because I called it because I didn't see it written on here either.
You want me to read what it now, how it reads? Is that what you mean?
Okay, this is the copy that we all have, because we have.
Uh, it must be a different one.
But we don't have it.
Thank you.
Okay. So it now says, um, parking prohibited certain hours, no parking Monday through Friday on the east side of Broadway from the intersection of Magna Tees to the intersection of Robert Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We both on 75.
We're on 76. Resolution Number 76 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending the reappointment of Bernard Matthews to the Board of Assessment Review.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 77.
Resolution Number 77 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending the appointment of Jane Perry to the Board of Assessment Review.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 78.
Mr. President?
Alderman Mills, I mean Alderman, uh, Harry. Sorry, buddy.
Um, yeah, I'd like to request that the following resolutions be bundled.
Or in a block?
In a block, yes, uh, in the spirit of Bob Senior. And 'cause they're all, they're all presidential departmental budget transfers, and those would be Resolutions 78, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 90, 92, 93, and 94. Thank you.
Thank you. Give you a few minutes, minority, if you haven't brought my hand, nobody have a problem? No? So the vote is for the right to vote, you cast now, voting for Resolution Number 78, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 90, 92, 93, and 94. You're up, Carl.
Resolution Number 78 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Engineering Budget. Resolution Number 80 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Assessors Budget. Resolution Number 81 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Parks and Recreation Budget. Resolution Number 82 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Parks and Recreation Budget. Resolution Number 83 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Public Works Budget. Resolution Number 84 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Sewer Budget. Resolution Number 85 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Department of Public Works Budget. Resolution Number 86 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Fire Department Budget. Resolution Number 87 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 City Clerk's Budget. Resolution Number 88 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Human Rights Budget. Resolution Number 90 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 General Fund Budget. Resolution Number 92 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Sewer Budget. Resolution Number 93 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Sewer Budget. Resolution Number 94 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Waste Water Treatment Facility Budget.
Thank you, Carl. On the question, hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all of the resolutions that I've just read, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero. Now move on to Resolution Number 79.
Resolution Number 79 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 City Bus Budget.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 89.
Resolution Number 89 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Planning Department Budget.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 91.
Resolution Number 91 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 General Fund Budget.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 95.
Resolution Number 95 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, approving an agreement with the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services and authorizing the mayor to execute same.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 96.
Resolution Number 96 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, approving membership in the O and W Rail Trail Coalition of Municipalities.
On the question, there is no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 97.
Resolution Number 97 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for intermunicipal police services.
On the question, there is no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 98.
Resolution Number 98 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for year-end transfers to the Corporation Council Budget.
On the question, there is no, Alderman Will?
President, I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Okay. Anyone else on the question, before I call for the vote, here is no one, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
That's eight in favor, one recused. Thank you, we go to Resolution Number 99.
Resolution Number 99 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the sale of 12 Susan Street, tax map number 56 dot 25 dash 5 dash 7, and recommending a negative declaration of environmental significance.
On the question?
Mr. President?
All the room else?
I would like to say that I support Youth Bill and I support Habitat, as I actually have a house in my ward on Schuster Street that's going up, and I've worked very closely with Christine LeBelle and the neighbors in the surrounding area. However, I don't approve of selling said property for a dollar. This is nothing that's going to help us move ahead in our fiscal state for the city. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question, before I call for the vote, see no one else? Alderman Dawson?
Mr. President, sorry, thanks for allowing me to speak, and that you can barely hear me.
And then Mike, I don't like to talk.
It's amazing. I'd just like to say, I think Youth Bill is a phenomenal program. They've done countless things in my neighborhood, and I agree with Marion that, not so supportive of the city selling properties, this is the exception. I believe this is a good cause, and I believe that we should be doing this, or the, and the exact manner that we're doing it, because it's actually going to go back on the tax rolls eventually when they improve this area, so I think it's a benefit to the city. And also, in my neighborhood alone, there are so many houses that look alike, and it's clearly shown in this book, that was a beautiful presentation, but it was more than a presentation. The proof is in the pudding, they've done a lot, and it, and may tell them home, they have improved the look of that area, so I'm all for this. Thank you. Sorry.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes.
From Gary.
Um, yeah, this sits right, right down the hill from my house, it's in my ward, and this has been an eyesore of light for a long time, and it didn't seem like there was going to be a resolution, because it took a long time for ownership to get transferred, it just seemed like something just kept dragging on and on, and I'm actually thrilled to see this, something finally happening, because I don't think that was a desirable property, especially with the house still gutted from fire, that we're going to have a good organization that's going to rebuild it, get it on the tax roll, and their track record speaks for itself, ultimately, this is a, this is a good financial win for Kingston, and I look forward to seeing a house there again. Thank you.
Anyone else? See no one else, here is no one else, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, eight, one, and now move on to Resolution 101.
Resolution Number 100 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the City of Kingston to apply for a CFA grant in the amount of $2,350,000 for the Water Quality Improvements Program for certain work at the wastewater treatment plant, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents in connection with said grant.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution 101.
Resolution Number 101 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adopting of bond ordinance in the sum of $2,210,000 for wastewater treatment plant projects.
On the question? There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, number zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 102.
Resolution Number 102 of 2016, Bond Ordinance Dated April 5, 2016, An Ordnance Authorizing the Issuance of an Additional $2,210,000 Bonds of the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to Pay Cost of Various Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements in and for Said City.
To be long?
Alderman Will?
Aye.
Alderman Dawson? Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Mills?
Yes.
Alderman Chabot?
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman Eckert?
Aye.
Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, nine zero. And now move on to Resolution Number 103.
Resolution Number 103 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing and adopting an additional bond ordinance in the sum of $50,000 for the Pipe Plan Pedestrian Cortico Investigative Study.
On the question?
President?
Alderman Will?
I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Anyone else on the question? Going to call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, eight. And now move on to Resolution 101.
Resolution Number 104 of 2016, Bond Ordinance Dated April 2, 2016, An Ordnance Authorizing the Issuance of an Additional $50,000 Bonds of the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to Pay Part of the Cost of an Investigative Study Related to the Rehabilitation of the Pipe Plan Pedestrian Cortico Project in and for Said City.
Alderman Will?
Alderman Dawson?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Mills?
Yes.
Alderman Chabot?
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman Eckert?
Aye.
Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Alderman Will?
Recused.
Resolution is adopted, eight, one. And now move on to Resolution Number 105.
Resolution Number 105 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the sale of 141 Rear Pine Road, tax map number 56 dot 33 dash 3 dash 45, and recommending a negative declaration of environmental significance.
On the question, there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 106.
Resolution Number 106 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to conduct a public auction of property at 85 Holm Street and recommending a negative declaration of environmental significance.
On the question, there is no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, and now we'll move on to Resolution Number 107.
Resolution Number 107 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of 116 Wilbur Avenue, tax map number 56 dot 49 dash 2 dash 17, from Nana Popco to the City of Kingston, and recommending a negative declaration of environmental significance.
On the question, Alderman Coop?
Thank you, Mr. President. In our discussion last night on this at the caucus, I was very much against this resolution because we had no idea who the principals were, whether the engineering plan had been accepted, and we have too many projects in the city that I think are causing, that are problematic, the Pipe Plan, Washington Avenue, upcoming will be the, uh, facility at the, what is it? The one that makes the briquettes.
What's that?
The facility at the.
Antwerp.
The ways water.
Yeah, okay. In the last 24 hours, I think, a lot of good efforts have been made to let us know who the engineering company is, they're a world-class engineering company that has done a lot of historic preservations throughout, throughout the northeast. We're getting to know who the principals are, it is true, there are some gaps that have to be filled in, as one of the speakers pointed out, incorporation so far, the plan has not yet been completed, the engineering plan has not been completed, I would like to see that move a lot faster, but I think that my reservations have now been alleviated, and I will support the resolution.
Anyone else on the question?
Mr. President? Of course, in my opinion, so I have the no vote, President, please know that it isn't that I don't realize the following, a savings of $35,000 to the city for demolition costs. The city should not incur that expense, I agree with that, the burden that the homeowner has arrested in their own parent tax situation of how it got to there, and the donors that remain anonymous, that's our right. Yes, we have received information at the 11th hour tonight, but to me, there's still many unknowns to this issue, there's no transparency, open communication, completely, how can we move forward and ensure the public that men and women is organized, funded, and competent to move forward and make this project realistic? I did agree with Alderman Coop last night in his plight to return us to committee because there were things to be reviewed, and he has since made that decision that he's comfortable with what's there, however, I do remain uncomfortable with that, and it doesn't seem to me that the city will be free of this situation, it states that there's public safety issues still, and that our safety department will continue to accompany this area to provide that public safety, so the city does not become free of the situation, and it almost makes you wonder, does a dollar cover the cost of salaries associated with our city employees with this sale? Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Mr. President?
Alderman Will?
This first, I mean, this came up last year, but then it really, it came to a head in February, and mid-February, about seven and a half weeks ago, we learned that this, that there were serious cracks and fissures in the building, and that the demolition was scheduled. So, I, I was concerned, I am very interested in the historic preservation of Kingston's cultural and historic assets, so I did see what I could do to save the structure, I have no idea whether it would be possible or not. The mayor then issued a 30-day moratorium on the demolition, giving us some time to look at, to try to figure something out, and, and what I would characterize it as an extremely tight timeline, a lot of people stepped up, and an engineering report, as Alderman Coop alluded to, was completed by, really, a world. and an engineering report, as Alderman Coop alluded to, was completed by really a world-class engineering company, paid for privately, that is a complete report, there's nothing more to it. I understand building safety reviewing, and that's part of this process. I want to thank building safety, I want to thank corporation council, I want to thank the mayor for doing an outstanding job in making this, bringing this to this point where we're about to save a building that was constructed in the seventeen seventies and then purchased and clad in native hand-cuped blue stone in the eighteen fifties. That's a fascinating story, as the hundred or so people over here a week ago, Saturday, heard from a number of speakers. So, here we are, we're about to do what I think is a triple bottom line wins, social, historic, economic, cultural, we got all of this. In terms of transparency, we do now know, we have the names of the individuals that are associated with putting together this company, Kingston Preservation, in a very fast manner, and working very diligently with corporation council, and the mayor, and the owners. So, a lot of work has been done, put into this, to try to save this building, which will be and continue to be an asset for Kingston as we look at the Wilbur, the Village Wilbur as part of a future historic district, tying it to the canal, the DNH canal, a long linear park that stretches out beyond the county. So, I see this as a part of a puzzle that is really very inspirational for Kingston to look to the future, coming from its distant past. So, this is a good, this is the thirty-five thousand dollar savings that we've been talking about. This is about returning this building to the tax rolls, and let's be clear, those taxes were never going to be paid by the current owner, or by, or once the building came down in the form of demolition, as an undersized parcel, it could never be built on again, that property will never generate any revenue going forward, once that building is removed and that blue stone is carted out of the county. Now, we have a solution where this building can be stabilized within days and weeks after this, that we authorize the mayor to sign papers for these two sales. This will be, I calculate that within a ten years period, we will generate between sixty and ninety thousand dollars for the city in terms of savings for not having spent on demolition and on taxes that will be collected, because the intent is very clear. These are local people that are buying this structure, and they're going to invest mightily in the stabilization and then the restoration, and it's going to become a real asset again for the city. And once they complete all the restoration work, this will be reassessed at a much higher rate, and perhaps sold, perhaps kept, you know, that's for another time to think about. But it's going to generate more tax revenue, whereas if we don't do anything, nothing happens. So, I am an enthusiastic guest, hope tonight, I encourage all of my colleagues to vote yes as well. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else on the question, Alderman Brown.
Last night at the meeting, I wasn't know because I had some reservations, the parties that were going to be purchasing it. I since have had more information, and I know some of the principals of the home, and one has a very good reputation of being involved in historical renovations. We have the revertor clause in effect, and I know the Freeman before that repeatedly mentioned that the revertor clause on trans are. This is a mistake we're not going to make this time. And I also want to mention the fact, I even talked to Kitty, that we need to organize a list of what is possible historic, and give a list to the building and safety department, because they're the first line of defense. I'm tired of coming back here when the grunting law is imminent. I think these things, properties need to be addressed, and committing to move forward with it, because I'm sure there's some other ones out there, Wilbur Avenue around in that area. And I think it behooves us all, if we can get a grasp on this, we won't be looking at demolition costs, we'll let the house be kept on the tax rolls. So, I really feel that the historical preservation society or permission needs to work hand-to-hand with building and safety so they can have a list, and they can notify if something is being abandoned or slowly going disrepair. So, tonight, I will be a yes vote on this, and I really hope this comes to fruition. It's in my ward, and I have to do say, it's been hiding in plain sight. I walked by numerous times and didn't really notice it because it blended in with foliage, maybe because foliage is growing over it. So, but I would like to see this move forward, so I will be a yes. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question, before I call for the vote, Alderman Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oops, worked for everyone else, but not for me. There we go. Ah, it's out. Can you hear me? Okay, I'll just try to, I'll try to talk loud. I want to thank, actually, Kingston Preservation for their willingness to save a unique historical landmark in Kingston. They're stepping up here, they're taking risk, and they're taking on some liability to do it, and in taking over this Booth property and stabilizing the property, they're performing a public service and preserving a public good, which is Kingston's unique and important historical legacy. We know, too, that preservation of historical landmarks has correlated to greater economic development, so there's a broader public good here beyond simply restoring this property, although that is a worthy goal in and of itself. And I also just want to say, as an aside here, that last night, we had a pretty spirited council meeting about this very issue in caucus, and I think the debate was healthy and good. We have an airing of views, no matter how passionate we might become, I think it helps all of us better weigh the risks and the benefits associated with any proposed action, even if in the end, we weigh the variables differently. So, Mr. President, thank you, I'll be voting in support of this transfer of the Booth house to Kingston Preservation. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question, before I call for the vote? Seeing no one, how's I'm going to call for the vote, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, eight one, now move on to resolution number one oh eight.
Resolution number one hundred eight of two thousand sixteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of one sixteen Wilbur Avenue.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, eight one, now move to resolution number one oh nine.
Resolution number one hundred nine of two thousand sixteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, to certify and accept the environmental findings under the requirements of Article Eight of the Environmental Conservation Law of New York State.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero, now move on to resolution, that's resolution number one ten.
Resolution number one hundred ten of two thousand sixteen, resolution of the city of Kingston Common Council to adopt a comprehensive plan for the city of Kingston.
On the question, Alderman Mills.
Thank you, President Noble, and that is my, what I'm saying here is, I'm thanking President Noble, Sue Cahill, and Dan Schuster, Deb Brown, for the efforts of the comprehensive plan, and all the members and volunteers that made this an effort to get the comprehensive plan two thousand, or twenty twenty-five in place, and I look forward to the zoning continuing and that being completed as well. So, thank you to all of you.
Alderman Will.
I'd like to echo Alderman Mills' gratitude, to you, President Noble, to Alderman Brown, to all the volunteers that worked tirelessly on this. I know it's been a long, long time, and I felt badly last month, I have to say, that we didn't really properly...
Fine.
Feth you.
I have to fix it.
Yeah, but thank you, because I think it was a huge job, and it was long overdue, so, you know, we're going to continue to work on it, but I think this is a really big milestone for the city. Thank you.
Anyone else before I call for the vote? You won't be on my desk, but it's okay. Call for the vote, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, nine zero. I conclude the resolutions for this evening, going to move in before I ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Mills.
I'd like to end tonight's meeting in memory of Lena Reinhardt, she was the daughter of our retired former fire chief John Reinhardt. Thank you.
Alderman Chavitt.
Hope you can hear me, my microphone has been taken away.
Yeah.
I never get a microphone. Anyway, I would like to close the meeting tonight, I'm Laura Sickler, recently passed, from Dernback Retreat, lifelong resident, seamstress, currently homemaker. She's been part of the community for a long time, married to a lower working veteran, very nice family, she raised family here in Kingston, so I'd say hello.
Anyone else? Alderman Dawson.
He's having this in mind, I don't want him to. I asked, I'd like to close the memory, Mr. President, allow me as you can get, I'd like to close the meeting tonight in honor of my uncle Warren Dawson, who was a lifelong resident in the city of Kingston, he was a vet, and he has a long history in many ways, like, it's one of the things you find out at funerals, the graveyard, the grave site that was recently recognized off of Wilbur Avenue, we have a long history in that grave site on the Fitzgerald side. So, I found a lot about my uncle at his funeral, it was amazing, but in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I have a couple, actually. I have to close the meeting in honor of Bob White's hot. If anyone lived in my neighborhood, they would know Bob White's hot. He had the little grocery store at the park, New Kirk Avenue, and sure, many of them knew him, and or didn't know him, and, you know, he was a person that sort of, every day, a lifelong resident, lived on Washington Avenue, and he had multiple jobs, you know, he remembered the way the boy they grew up went to Mackenzie Church. He was a good guy, always been managing, you know, he always taught the pastor class. So, I'd like to close the meeting in his honor. I'd also like to close it in the honor of Martin Kelly, I don't know if anyone knew him, but he's also a lifelong resident of Kingston, he grew up in Kingston, went to Kingston High School. He was actually married to his wife, Megan, I believe, for forty-six years, and was electrician, Marine Corps vet, had a real long handle, barbed mustache, wit was unbelievable, good sense of humor, and he passed very quickly. Okay, and then I have another person I'd like to close the meeting in, in the honor of James Smith. He actually resided in Cooyum, but he was born in Kingston, worked at IBM, and he actually worked for Joseph Blake, his funeral home, for ten years, you know, as helping him with their funeral services. And he's also the father of Jim Kelly Smith, if anyone knows him, and he has a couple daughters, one's manager in the room, one was athletic director in Ulster, was campaign coach, one was athletic. Another great guy in this world. One other one, another person, was Patricia Satile, lived on...
Delaware.
Delaware Avenue. Yeah, she used to babysit my children for many, many years, and, you know, so, she went quickly off, so, now in this state, I don't even know where it was, so. With that, I'm done. Anybody else have anyone before I call for a motion to adjourn? Seeing no others, like to call for a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting hereby adjourned, very positive, very calm, a lot of revolutions this evening, I'd like to thank everyone for cooperating.